Do I hear a motion to the council?
I saw a move, a second.
Motion made in second. Move down to council discussion. Discussion items.
Huh?
Aye.
A one favor.
Oh, one favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll move down to council discussion of the items. The decision on the public safety fee.
Mr. Mayor? May I?
Go right ahead.
So after the council's last meeting, I did a little more checking into this with Roberta asked, and unfortunately, a public safety levy as a property tax is not particularly appealing option. Oregon's constitution with Measure Five and Measure Fifty has some hard limits on how high property taxes can go. They have it as part of the property tax report. What that boils down to in dollars and cents is if you guys go with a property tax levy, assuming you get it passed by voters, which hasn't had the best chance of success here in Lake County, you would lose forty thousand dollars in general fund revenue approximately. So the levy would only, if passed, only potentially generate eighty thousand in revenue of restricted funds. You'd have to go to those three areas, and you would then lose forty thousand of unrestricted funds, which is the normal tax rate. That's why most municipalities and other places have gone with more like public safety fees and stuff, because most places are butting up against the edge of that, those property tax limits. And we currently have one of the higher property tax rates in the state, so we butt up against that limit very quickly. We're actually a little higher than some places because some of our rates were in effect prior to Measure Fifty going into effect, but we're at that limit. So we would be losing seventy, we would be going from seventy-four cents on the dollar, because we're already under some repression, down to sixty-nine cents. And like I said, that roughly translates to, and this was just Dave Knowles' best estimates, he's, we owe him a lot, because he spent most of his day, why didn't he get back from vacation, kind of calculating this, but we would be losing money. So if the council still would like to go ahead with that, I can, but it's not going to generate the amount of revenue that you guys are looking for. It's not going to generate the hundred twenty thousand that was needed for another position or apartment. So, and that's, like I said, that's state constitution, there's very little we can do about it. So that's, bond measures do not have those limits, so if you were doing something like a capital improvement, like a water treatment plant or something along those lines, you'd be able to do it. So like I said, you decide later on in the year or something like that, if you're able to get the funding together to service a USDA loan or something for a water treatment plant or something along those lines, you could do that, and that would bump up against those limits. But as far as operational expenses, the pie, and you would also frazzle a bunch of the other districts, because that would also reduce the amount they're all getting. So you would have probably probably the county, cemetery district, library district, and health district, because that pie gets smaller for everybody when you add stuff on. So that's why property taxes are not, are kind of disfavored because of what Oregon has done as far as its constitutional property taxes. Does anybody have any questions?
How much room is left in that ceiling or like?
Anything, we're at the max. Anything we add to it, we start doing reductions that way.
Totally, there's no way to do that.
Unless you did it on the water bill, like you had previously done.
Not as a tax.
Not as a tax.
It can't be added as a tax.
Correct, unless, like you said, it's a capital improvement. If you were building a new police station, for example, or a new nine-one-one building, you could do that, but that's why a lot of municipalities end up with, like the Medford Library, I don't remember if you guys remember how, you know, they built it and it was unoccupied for almost a decade there. They were able to get the money to build it with a property tax bond, but then because of the Measure Five and Measure Fifty limits, they couldn't afford to staff it until some other expenses went other places. So it's a common problem around the state.
Well, we checked it out, that's what my motion was the other day, is that we run it by our attorney, and we found out that it's not feasible, so.
So do we have options?
You could do the public safety fee like you're talking about, and there is a process by which, we are too late in the process now to submit to the voters, but you could do something like that. There is an advisory vote procedure that you can do, it's non-binding, that you can get, if you want the voters to vote on that, if you're not required to, but you can. And some places have done things of that nature, that's one aspect of it.
But Jeff, you spoke of the many that you've looked into, and I appreciate you looking into the communities here in Oregon that have done that, because we've heard there are many that have gone to the public safety fee, or not, not a public safety fee, but a fee that's tacked on.
Water bill.
Or whatever services they're operating.
Correct.
Community or government.
And that's why a majority of them have gone that direction, because apart, there's no room in the property tax stuff anymore to, there, yeah, except unless you bring in, I mean, I think a lot of times your better effort's bringing in annex to territory and stuff like that, where you expand your property tax base versus, it's a bad nature, so that might be something to look at.
Well, we're blessed with by those in attendance at one of our meetings in regards to the fact that it was a roundabout way to get around what Oregon has done to the communities and government, it was by putting the C cap on.
Yeah.
But they are resorting to that all over Oregon, in all size communities.
Correct. Just because, like I said, it's kind of one of the few avenues left where you're able to do something along those lines. Outside of bond, I mean, primarily property tax stuff now has primarily become for capital improvements. That's where we're at with it. It's how you finance, like what the hospital did, or what the library tried to do. And I would also just mention too, if you're gonna ever go after one of those bonds, give yourself time, you've got to get buy-in, even with a valid, a good project. I think it took the hospital a year of campaigning and everything else like that, and remember, previously, the library, two bond measures failed, when Cecil Elder was still running things, to try to get that finished off. So this community doesn't.
It's hard to push through.
It is. He has had something that people see right off the bat as far as.
Well, just as the public safety fee is hard to push through as well, because people don't want the extra expensive services. So, you know, no matter how you do that increase in fees, it's gonna be something that the general government's not gonna be.
Correct. The successful campaigns that I've seen do it have a lot of public meetings, a lot of public buy-in, and you get, and maybe you can decide to do something along those lines, whether you do an advisory vote or something in the future, harness that energy, okay? Say, "Look, we want, we want to do thi, if you want to do this and do this with us, then we need you to step up to the plate and form out a committee, we'll help you with it, but you're gonna have to be kind of the public relations thing for this, to get people to buy in, because if there's no buy-in, there's no point." So, like I said, I mean, again, you do have the legal option of pack, doing, I mean, you guys could pass that tonight, and there's no recourse for it, although they could do a referendum process on that, if they wanted, but other than that, yeah. But again, if you end up needing to pass a property tax bond later on for funding a, something to do with an municipal water supply or something like that, there can be some issues there, but those are political considerations, not legal, I just want you to know what the legal constraints on carbon taxes. Like I said, it's, that's why most, most people are talking about, you use them for, because how expensive and how tough the campaigns are, you use them for important capital improvements, where you need to, that seems to be the, what I've seen as a survey, what I've surveyed with a lot of city attorneys and a lot of other municipalities, that seems to be the what they're used for.
This looks like interesting information, appreciate that, and I thank Dave Knowles and his staff over in the assessing office for doing the work to let us know what we're up against in regards to the lawsuit, what we think we might garner from such a level, so, I mean, and thank you, Jeff.
Not a problem, I'm here for it. Jay?
So any ideas about where we go from here, or do we just fall back in the weeds and think it over and see how different?
Some of the discussion, when we had a lot of people in here that were on the, to discuss the public safety fee, you know, wanted to get together a committee, you know, wanted to form a committee, I think what we really should do is go ahead and do that, and just do a sort of, you know, put a plan together, and, and so that everybody can see what we need. But right now, we've got two positions open, and, you know, we have a chief coming, but, you know, so we still have enough funding right now to continue forward with, you know, where we are, because we're not even, we haven't even negotiated yet, I know it was in the, the whatever that we've already negotiated, we haven't negotiated, we're gonna do that in August, so, but I think right now, if, we're, we're fine in our budget this year, you know, and if I did put funding in there to hopefully get the sixth officer, so I think right now we're okay. And if we take a year to decide and then get that back, you know, do it, whatever, but have more public, but, you know, it would be good, and maybe that with, I'm hoping with Red Rock and the other annexations, that we'll have some funding that will increase, and the marijuana tax, both the ones we get from state revenue, insuring, and the one that we get for the three percent.
When would ours go into effect?
It has.
If it does?
Are you guys ready to move on to the next?
Well, I just want to know that, that we're not just, but if we form the committee and lay it, and say, "This is the way it is," you know, "If you want twenty-four hour coverage, we have to do something," and besides whine about the water.
I think if we just move slow, and then like I say, once we move, the three percent, I can't imagine not passing, but take that money and, and dedicate it to the police department or emergency services, so that they have, you know, they need pay, and like I said, I keep running the ad for a police officer, and we're not even, hardly getting one, we had one, but that's not gonna work out, but, you know, can't even get them to apply, let them come here, so we have to do something if we're gonna have our department, and we are having our department, you know, as we've discussed before, that we want to keep our own department, so we'll do what we need to.
In our recruitment efforts, is there a hardcore that the council needs to take in, what we're putting out for recruitment for officers? Because we've heard that cry, that we're not gonna give anybody what we're offering, and get them, they're gone as soon as we get them. So, you know, our council itself, without a committee, needs to come to realization of where we're at, and if we're not getting any response, maybe we need to look at that course.
Well, and I think that will come in with negotiations a little bit, you know, I mean, when, when you consider a base rate for an officer, new, brand-new officer, remember, just brand-new officer, whether they've been to academy or not, is eighteen dollars and forty-six cents an hour, and that is not very much money. And I've done some comparison, you know, like with Clamath, and theirs is a whole higher than ours is. They have more people too, but on the other hand, if we train them and they go there, then it's the same thing. So if we need somebody who wants to come here for the quality of life that Lakeview has to offer.
Maybe today's not a good day to talk about.
Well, no, but, you know, I, I've been, I think, looking at that salary package is gonna be critical during negotiations.
So we'll like that, or so what, what the real apple up gives?
Yeah, and I do really think that is critical.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. The other thing too, if I could, not only the salary package, the other thing that's kind of discouraging here for, for law enforcement is, you, there's nowhere to go. Ah, we don't have, like, or you don't, we don't have dedicated drug task force, you don't have dedicated detectives, you know, we don't have that kind of stuff, so, all your other bigger departments, and granted, I understand they're bigger and they have, they have the ability to do that, but there's nothing like that here. So it kind of deters, because you can't, you can't better yourself, you know? I mean, you can look at it one way, yeah, we do everything, but when you, when you look at trying to, if you want to go to a different department, or you retire and you want to, you want to go somewhere else, when you're ready, you don't have any of that in your resume, as far as specialty training and whatnot. So that's another thing, I mean, and there's really nothing we can do about that, I understand that, but it is another issue, that's why I think, need to kind of more concentrate on the wage package and benefit package than, you know, to get some interest in here.
Is there not ever, is it illegal? There are, I've read of other things for, okay, we'll bring you in, we'll train you, but you have to stay with us for three years or something like that.
What ends up happening normally on that is, the other department has to pay back us for the academy, that's it. And a lot of them are so desperate, because there's a huge police shortage, and I think Dave would notice this, there's a police shortage around the state, is there not? Because there's a lot of people that don't want to do it anymore, because of some of the Antifa stuff and some of the other, so you're dealing, it's a, it's an employee's market, not an employer's, so that's.
You have a lot of, sorry to interrupt you, you have a lot of departments that are actually giving signing bonuses and hiring bonuses to get people, because it's so hard to get law enforcement right now.
Well, that's a lot. It is, it is, and I know some do, and there's quite a few options we can do, but I think that as we go into negotiations, that's something that will be, I haven't heard about it, but I think that's gonna come in out of, you know, between the wage gap.
And those, those type, those type of things can't be negotiated as, okay, you take a signing bonus, and you leave us in two or three years, there's things you can do to claw that back. Or you do it as a, we're paying your student loans, and you, you know, we'll pay an extra in your student loans, and you are, you owe that back if you don't stay.
X amount.
X amount, that's what they do at the hospital for, when they pay nursing students away for a while, so there are some, there's some creative ways, and that might be appropriate for an advisory council to kind of look around and see what some of those options are out there as far as.
Yeah.
As far as advancement, like you were saying, the advancement is, I guess, that way in any small community or government, in a, in a county where they have seven employees in there, so, I mean, there, there's not much room there.
Right, right, and that's, the reason I brought that up is because I think that.
But it is something that's.
It emphasizes that we need to concentrate, we can't concentrate there, we can't dedicate, you know, have dedicated this, that, and the other, and we do, basically all do everything. We do, you know, we are detectives, we're drug, all that kind of stuff, but because there's not that attraction there, there's, there's no initiative, and that's what I was trying, why I brought that up, is that that just needs to put more emphasis on the fact, improve what we can. You know, since we can't go this route, then we need to really concentrate on, because I mean, we're, we're struggling out there right now. I mean, it's, it's, without a doubt, it's, it's rough.
Dave, is it act or two that the state police can't have an open position here, they can't fill, or?
Well, I understand, and I don't know exactly, I know the Saunders, she was, she is on temporary assignment over at Clamath, and her initial plan was to move back over to Clamath, because that's where, she's got a house there, and that's where she, that's where she lives. So my understanding, last time I talked to her, is, when they find somebody to fill her position, then she was gonna, gonna move, but I don't think they have an active open one here right now.
But the, the state police overall are at a shortage of, or?
That's, that's what she was kind of indicating, is why they requested to have her go there.
They have prepositioned.
But I mean, you know, they, they don't work nights anyway, so it doesn't, it doesn't benefit the town.
That affect you as part of that.
Because, you know, when they go off duty three or four o'clock, and they work whatever shift that they, that is deemed by their supervisors, but that's not an asset for us at night, because there's just, there's just no, they're not working. So I mean, basically, what you have at night, and if you want, want to try and go to twenty-four hour coverage, you can have to rely on the city and the county, and that's all you're gonna get. So, and some sort of working relationship, which we work really well with the county, and they work really well with us, as far as covering when we need it and that kind of thing. But that's the only bodies you're gonna have to play with to get twenty-four hour coverage, is gonna be between us and them, so.
Is that something we need to do with the F?
I guess I have a question, but you're talking about doing your agreements, your negotiation. Do we have to wait for that in order to decide to, you know, get a bonus to come here, or is that something that we can just do without?
I think that part comes after you, after the contract, because there, I know like with one of, you know, they got cert paid up here, you know, certificate paid, about three percent for one and three percent for another, so that's what's in the contract, but I don't know if there's anything about a bonus or moving, you know, moving bonus or a, you know, something like that incentive, it might have to be outside the contract, but I don't know.
It might be, but it's also, they kind of need to know what, how much they're gonna have after they do negotiations, because that's gonna determine the entire salary package, so that'll.
Possibly gonna change, we're kind of stuck here.
So that's kind of the other piece of that that wouldn't be necessary.
But I can check with our, I could tell them to screw those negotiations too.
But it'd be nice to know even after the fact, because it may take that to get people to come, like you as.
It does, it just may, but so far we're not batting very good.
Well, and worse, because employees, we're ready to go to negotiations, but the holdup right now is getting writ over here, because we can, we can, at my understanding, unless, unless there's something I'm missing, and I'm not a brainiac when it comes to applying the law, but I think that we could come to an agreement without the union, but they gotta ratify the thing, so that, then we have to have him here to, to ratify it and check over it and all that stuff, and signatures, and that's been put off now till the fifteenth and sixteenth, I think.
Sixteenth and seventeenth, yeah.
Sixteenth and seventeenth.
So it's a couple weeks now.
And it's legally, that's not a good idea not to have him here, because like I said, a lot of unions would just neither reject it, it's better to have them involved in processing the beginning, so that when you get an agreement, it's binding and everybody is ready to go with what they're doing.
We don't want to do something that's gonna be negated down the line, because we didn't do it correctly, but.
Right. It's not something that you want to skip steps.
But we are, yeah, working on it.
Well, it sounds like we're set, like you say, referred, as far as our number of employees or what we've got in our funds, and as we progress on, we may have to look at some of it.
Avenue, but you know, the meantime, we can still start towards that, or, you know, but once we, we really need to be up in staff, a lot.
Yeah, because it's really disappointing when you have people and they don't work out.
And I will tell you, it's not worth, it's not worth taking somebody that's questionable just to fill the position.
No, no, I don't know, it's pretty sound.
That, because you just are buying in trouble later on, it's from experience in a variety of different fields that I even buy some employers on, get a good candidate first, even if you have to wait for them to go to the academy versus, as I'm sure Dave can tell you too, a bad apple's a bad apple.
But I, I'm sure that our, and I, I realize that if that's in negotiations, and that is why it's in question, but I'm sure our local officers would prefer to have some backup there.
Some blue.
And you know, so if you're gonna give somebody a little bit extra pay to come sign on, I'm sure they would be able to do that.
We have had that discussion a bit.
Yeah, so, well, if it's possible, we should look at it.
I think we should look at it, yeah, as soon, or right away, if we can do it and not cause a problem with the union or.
I think that would happen, because we have had discussions, I, you know, the officers have expressed their need, and I believe in protecting our officers, you have to protect your employees, because if you don't, you're not gonna have any. So, you know, you have to take care of your people, so.
Work on that and see what we can do, hopefully we can get, get some more out of it. All right, any more on the discussion on the public safety fee for the police? And then, move on down to the marijuana three percent option tax.
So, we missed last year, we missed the sixteen one, just because of how fast everything kind of developed, so this is our next opportunity to get it on the ballot. The general requirements are, you've got to run it in the, in a November election of an even numbered year, it's kind of, it's a very unique, I don't know why they put restrictions on it, normally we do this with a resolution, statute requires an ordinance, so that's what we're doing is an ordinance, and we're not taking two different steps, otherwise you guys will get to come back for a second meeting, so that's why it's all in one. The ballot title, the caption, explanatory statement, and everything else are already attached to this ordinance, because it's a lot simpler just to approve them initially instead of.
All this one package?
Yes, exactly, and these are, for the most part, directly taken from the sample from the lead awarding cities, this is not an area to reinvent the wheel. I've made a few modifications to their ordinance, just to make sure that it's effective properly, because this thing, one thing I didn't like about it is, they didn't specify that this thing really becomes effective after voters approve it, if they don't, it never becomes effective, so that's why the effective date is after voter approval, and the tax doesn't come into effect in January, and part of that is, the state will not collect in mid-quarter, they will, and the state's the one you're gonna collect it, you, the town does not have the infrastructure to be able to collect sales tax, that's a state function, so if you want the state to collect it, you go by their rules. So their rule is, you start in the quarter, so January first, two thousand nineteen would be the first quarter they were willing to do that. These measures have been done all over the state, in the, in the towns and counties that allow for local options, and most of them have, I think all of them have passed. The one thing you're probably gonna want to get out there is, whether you approve marijuana or not, we have shops here, so it's better to tax it or not, you want to make sure you get message out there to folks that.
There will be benefits.
There will be benefits, and saying no to this doesn't change the fact that pot shops aren't in here, because even if you wanted to revoke, revoke what you've done with three shops here now, or as long as any of the current shops are in operation, you can't, you can't carve it out from them, you could ban new ones, but what's here is what's here, you can't, it's like a grandfather thing on a property decision, once they're there, they're in fact.
Three, I think, there's three.
Well, there's two, that one hasn't opened yet.
Correct, potentially.
We have nothing in the way of ordinance that, that says we'll only have so many.
No.
We have depended on OLCC, because OLCC has some limitations, if you have so many liquor establishments per capita.
Those don't quite, those don't quite count in this, but it's, there's also some limitation. Only really this downpenter is, the only area, as we talked about the last ordinance that we did to regulate time, place, and manner.
Yeah.
There's a very limited zone that's outside of the philosophy from school, so.
And free enterprise would take care of it, so.
Yeah, I think that too. Do we have any ordinance against people standing out on the street waving marijuana signs at?
No. Any business is allowed to do that, so, as long as they're not beating traffic or obstructing.
Or just irritating people as?
If they harass people.
They are, that's not helping them, so.
And if they are harassing people, that's a different, that would be a nuisance at that point, if they're harassing somebody or whatever, there's, there's some stuff they could.
Yeah.
Because that's, that could be disorderly conduct, that could be harassment, depending on what they're, especially if they make, they make this a contact or something like that, there's stuff that could be done that way.
If they step out into the side, off the sidewalk into the highway, that's copied.
Then they're.
If I'm driving, it would be up.
If they get out in the middle of the highway, it's beating traffic, that's a form of disorderly conduct, that can't be cited, so.
Properly dress, no green stripes and just like.
Free speech, it's a good ordinance. Does anybody have any questions about any pieces of it, as far as, my piece can be understandable.
What's ordinance number?
I did not see it.
Ordinance number eight sixty-five.
Don't know if we're sure about the ordinance number, it's six sixty-five.
That's what I came up with, because one, every one that she had had, it was on the public safety fee.
It didn't pass.
Right, it didn't pass, so this overtook that number.
Okay, yeah, that's correct.
That's where we're at.
All right. So what'll happen, if you prove it tonight, is it'll be in next week's paper, there is a seven-day challenge to the ballot title, that will run out on the fifteenth, and then it'll be submitted, the deadline for submitting to the county, which will all be there, this will be past our publication deadline, will be the seventeenth, it'll be submitted before then, and then it'll go on the ballot. They do not print a voter stamp, pretend, just not do a voter stamp, put it in this county, because we're too small and it's too expensive, and we definitely don't want to pay to put this in the state ballot, that would be prohibitively expensive, so it'll show up on the, on that. Again, I'm gonna recommend you guys do some PSAs on it, to really get the message out about what it is, just so people understand what it's doing, if it's beneficial.
Do we need somebody to do the circuit, Seropt and those lions?
Labor, yeah, exactly, just to explain why it is and what it's doing.
And what, well, this is how it will benefit us, and the marijuana shops aren't gonna go away, even if it's.
Right. The other piece that's out there is, it's also set up to be going into the general fund, it's not dedicated funding, I, the, the kind of recommended that, because limited funding can, can be issued, that tax is gonna be permanent, so you may have different needs over the years, and if you dedicate it to a particular source, you lose the flexibility of moving around, so, but something like that in the enabling ordinance, then it's stuck permanently, and we get a certain amount anyway from the state, just for more unfortunate already. And we don't really have any idea, no real way of knowing. And we don't really have any idea, no real way of knowing what that's gonna generate right now until whoever is still the lasting, you know, sales and everything else. You just kinda said, free market's gonna determine how many shops are here. I wouldn't be surprised if the current number is always gonna be here, because of...
Um, once, once we hopefully get this passed and starts in January, do we collect quarterly or...
Yes, we get paid quarterly. That's what the state does, it's just like lodging tax and some of the other.
Like, it's great that we can run it through the state, because it's gonna coincide after there's a sale, like, they're getting 17 and they're gonna make sure we're getting three or whatever.
That's your, for the dealers and for us.
We get approved, so...
Right. And the other piece of it is that if somebody isn't doing things properly, Oregon Department of Revenue has the enforcement mechanism here. Because there are agents they have, they are allowed to, they are allowed to hit them with all the normal penalties like they would anything else, so we don't have to take all of the...
Correct.
Do we have anyone who's inspecting our current stores so that they have the proper, you know, frosting or whatever we need in the front door, that their, uh, filtering system is up to our standards? Do we have anybody who's checking on that?
Have we had complaints in regards to...
No, at first, and I, I did go into both of them and, and, you know, check and see. I mean, I'm not an official building person, but the ventilation seemed more than adequate. Not offensive, I, I smelled it a little bit, but not, you know, nothing, in my opinion, really offensive. Uh, I did make one shop screen their windows and stuff, but so, I said, "You can't look in."
Obviously, they changed that, yeah.
Yeah, I said, "Yeah." So, I did that and then make sure, and we will continue, our consultant or myself.
Correct, they, the county manager and the police have the authority under our ordinance to go inspect, and they have to go through the process on that.
And the reason for the filtration systems was, in our discussions, was to make sure that it was not offensive to those who were outside of the establishment.
Or neighboring businesses.
And other communities, and you definitely are more expanded as you walk by, I don't know.
And it seems like the ventilation system was kind of, has been kind of, I think there was, oh, the sample ordinance is almost every, one of them had something related to ventilation or offensive orders to make sure that it was not affecting the...
And really, most, everything that they have in there, other, you know, it's in sealed jars or sealed containers or sealed cabinets, you know, so it's not just marijuana sitting out smelling, um, any happens, because that would, I'm not even thinking that.
And again, they have the rules on, and this is stable, we have it in our ordinance, but it's also state rules as well, that you are not allowed to consume marijuana on premises. And that's, and if that ever happens, report it, and OLCC will, and that's just like a bartender drinking. I mean, that's a good way to make sure you don't have a license anymore, but, so, that is one they'll jump on very heavily. I think liquor's sort of the same.
Yeah, okay, so, that's right.
And that's one positive thing that Oregon has over California, is that we have the liquor commission, which still does, there's a lot of jurisdictions that have done this, don't have this centralized authority, because they got what is lit off of it. Are there any other questions as far as the marijuana ordinance, pieces of it, or anything along those lines?
Oh, I do have one. Um, we're proposing a 3%, is there any way down the road that that can be increased?
The state has set it at 3% right now, if the state increases it, and I don't believe, and once we get it in effect, even if they change it later on to be less, I don't believe they can adversely affect our tax that we've already imposed. Just like, for example, the county's lodging tax is a higher percent, you know, it's unrestricted because they put it into effect prior to the current law, um, it gets grandfathered in, so that's kinda my belief, unless something dramatically different happened with it.
But if they were to raise it, then would ours automatically raise it?
No, you would have to go, that would have to go back to the voters, yeah.
We'd have to vote, I think.
Yeah, with the way the current ordinance is written, unless they change the ordinance itself to require it to be, you know, ordinance of the law, they, they amend that law to no longer require voter referral.
That would be nice.
So, I don't see that happening usually, once something like that gets them to a format.
Yeah.
The only changes I've seen have been re-qualifications and then some minor blurbs on. And by the way, this does not, this sales tax does not affect medicinal marijuana either. That's exempt, it's still treated as a prescription. So, if somebody comes in with a medical card and buys it that way, they aren't paying either state or local tax on it for their medicine.
That was, I won, I'm glad you mentioned that, because in a conversation with some people who were talking about the medical uses, and they said, "Well, you don't need a card anymore because you can get it." And I said, "But you get benefits if you have the medical card." And I said, "For one thing, I don't think you have to pay the tax, and sometimes you get a better price on, on the products you want than just a recreational user."
And I believe there's larger possession limits under the medical cards as well.
Yeah, I just said, I think there are benefits to having a card, if that's, you know, that's what you want for your...
And they are looking at doing some reforms on that, because there are some, there are some problems with the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program, because they, they're underfunded and it's kinda transitioned.
I think, maybe since day one.
That OLCC, you have to...
State level, it's not really our issue, it's not something I would ever get involved in. It, it just isn't, you don't wanna be there, let them figure it out, it's, it's so complicated that it's, uh... And like I said, the state has pretty much preempted local jurisdictions from, from doing anything.
Yeah. Anything else on this? Okay, we will return the work session at 3:37.